Okay, the December 17th, 2020 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will come to order. Roll call, Ms. Rooney.
Ms. Anderson, here. Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Treebawser?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
And Mr. Delapetro?
Here. Ms. Rooney, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings. Oh, sorry, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted as follows: emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted at Ross Street School, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Okay. Ms. Anderson, please read the closed session statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to motion for the approval of the following closed session statement. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempt from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters. In addition, the Board will be reviewing our 2020 Board self-evaluations. Any information regarding the closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussion of these matters in closed session no longer exists.
Okay. I have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Molnar. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, this time we'll retire to closed session. We'll be back no earlier than 6:30. Please rise for a suit and flag a moment in silence.
No motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Treebawser. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Roll call, Ms. Rooney.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Mr. Sedana?
Here.
Mr. Treebawser?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
Mr. Delapetro?
Here. Okay, will someone make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meetings?
No motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any additions or corrections? No? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Ms. Rooney, please state for the record any notice of bids received by the Board.
Mr. President, on November 24th, 2020, IFB 2108 for electrical supplies. On December 4th, 2020, IFB 2106 plumbing supplies. And on December 16th, 2020, Parith Samjin opened a bid for asbestos removal.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rooney. Okay, to facilitate the flow of this meeting, questions and comments from the public will be addressed after the presentation of all agendas. By order of the Governor, we are limited to a capacity of 25 people in the room at one time. We ask that, once you have made your comments and listened to the response, if any is given, to please vacate the room to allow another speaker the opportunity to comment. This is a request, not a demand. Thank you for your consideration. Okay, Dr. Zaga, please read the record of superintendent's reports for the month of November 2020.
Mr. President, I have the following reports to present to the Board: student registers and the security and fire drill reports, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and the reports of the attendance officers.
Okay. Superintendent's agenda?
Mr. President, I have 17 items to present to the Board.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the superintendent's agenda?
No motion.
Motion by Mr. Molnar. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Okay, seeing none, roll call, Ms. Rooney.
Ms. Anderson?
I will be abstaining on items 14 and 16 in the name of JFK. We have institute yes to all other items.
Ms. Port-- I'm sorry, Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebawser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes. Policy and planning, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following 13 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Treebawser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. Delapetro?
Mr. Harris?
For the public, just want to highlight items number 12 and 13. On item 12, there's a couple adjustments to this year's student calendar, just the elimination of the early dismissals in late January for the high school finals, final exams, and then just a correction on the June primary date. Instead of June the 1st, it will be June the 8th will be an early dismissal. And then finally, item number 13 is the new calendar for next school year beginning in September. Be sure to take a look at that and plan accordingly. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions from the Board? Okay, seeing none, roll call, Ms. Rooney.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebawser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes. Okay, curriculum, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, I present the following seven items. I have moved for the adoption of the foregoing.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Velez. Dr. Zaga, you want to provide an overview of the state and local assessments for the district?
Thank you, Mr. President. This year, we're presenting our state and local assessment overview. This is our annual presentation. It's a little bit unique this year because last year, there were no state assessments. But we will be including in this presentation our most recent NJSLA scores, which were in 2019, also our local test, which we call Linkit, our SAT scores, and our WEATA access scores. Our AP scores also are not included in this presentation. Our first recap, again, from 2019, is from the NJSLA, and this is English Language Arts and Literacy for grades three through 10. This test is graded on a score of one through five, and it gives the average for each grade level at each score level. The last two columns are significant, and what this does is, this is a three-year comparison. So, from 2017 to 2019, it compares how many of the lowest scores went down, which is what you want, what we want to see, and how many of the highest scores went up, which is also what we want to see. So, we see here that five of eight of the lowest scores went down, and the highest scores went up. Next slide, number four, is a comparison of the Woodbridge Township School District to the state numbers. And this shows that in language arts, we have some work to do. Just let me say that last year, although we didn't take the test, we were somewhat disappointed because we had been preparing, and we had many interventions in place that we knew we were going to see some positive scores at all grade levels, but unfortunately, due to COVID, the state canceled the test statewide. So, in 2019, slide number five, this breaks down all of our data again by ethnicity, by gender, by economic status, by students with disabilities, and by English language learner status. And again, the last column here is of importance, where you, we have annual targets for each group, and we met six of nine annual targets. And also, on the bottom, our performance, our growth percentiles, and this is basically a measure of how much each score is growing, and for the past three years, we have met those standards. So, we are headed in the right direction in language arts. Now, Linkit, as I said, is, we have, it's relatively new to the district. We've been using it just a couple of years, and this provides data on every student in math and language arts for grades three through high school. And there are three assessments. They are called Form A, Form B, and Form C. Form A is given in early in the year, Form B is given mid-year, and Form C is given at the end. So, this is a comparison of Form A from this past fall to Form A from last year's fall. And as you could see, in grades three to five, we did better this year, and the one variable that, of course, we have to remember is many of these students took their exam at home because they were remote learning, so it was an uncontrolled environment. But again, we see, if one assumes that these scores are valid, we saw actually an improvement, we didn't, but we didn't see any learning loss. But again, many of our students took these tests at home, took the exams at home, so it was an uncontrolled environment. Next slide, number seven, these are our middle school scores, and again, we don't see the learning loss or regression that we thought we would see, but also, we have students taking the exams at home. And then, slide eight is our English, English 1, English 2, English 3. And again, these, this is a slight decrease, but again, not what we had expected to see, and not what we thought we would see as far as regression goes. So, we hope that these numbers are valid. It's really the only numbers that we have to compare for our K to 12 students from this year to last year.
Dr. Zaga?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you a question? It looks like a national break here on the Linkit, just for the parents' recollection. Linkit is an online test. It's a benchmark, what they retained over the summer. How many questions is it? Is it 50 questions, 100 questions? How's that operate?
I'm not sure of the questions. It's about an hour each for math and language arts. And it's a, it's a local assessment, and what it does is it tracks, it's correlated to the standards, which is what the NJLS, NJSLA measures, and it provides data on every student on every standard. And the important part about Linkit is it provides our schools with measurable areas for each student to work on, and it provides a great deal of feedback for us.
Right, and the parents have access to all the scoring and such, right?
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
We're hoping actually to give Form B, which is the second one, in sometime in January. Mathematics, again, these are the 2019 scores. This slide compares 2017, 18, and 19 in our math. Again, same, same type of scoring, one to five, grades three through eight, and then three different, this goes by subject in, in high school. Again, looking at the last column, four of the nine had the lowest numbers go down and the highest numbers go up. State comparison for math between NJSLA and the district on slide 11. Here, in, in many of the grades, the average was higher than the state average in different areas, especially, by the way, Level 4 and Level 5 are considered passing. Okay, so anything below that is considered, would not be considered as meeting the standard. But here, we have, we, as a district, we, we have a tendency to perform better on math. And moving ahead to slide 12, this is our disaggregate groups, our ethnicity, our gender, economic status, disabilities, and English language learners. Again, looking at the last column, although we only met three of nine targets, we are still maintaining our standards in growth. This is, by the way, this is some of the data that our school equity teams are going, are looking at, especially the parts, the data that's broken out by ethnicity. And this is what I mean by data that we could use to target specific students or specific groups of students. Slide 13, here is our Linkit. And again, this is the only test so far we've given this year that we can compare with a test from last year. And again, in, in elementary school, we're seeing, we're not seeing the regression or the learning loss that we thought we might see due to virtual school last spring. Slide 14 is our middle school math. Same thing. It's, it's a little bit closer, but again, we were, we were anticipating, you know, 10 to 15 to 20% regression in these scores, and we didn't see it. And then finally, in high school, similar, similar data. Again, these, each school uses all this Linkit data to identify weaknesses in student perform, not only student performance on stand, different standards, but also groups of students. Science, science is part of the SLA, but it's still a field test at this point. So, it's only given to grades five, eight, and 11. And here, we see that our state numbers on grade five are comparable to the state, and then grades eight and 11, we don't do as well as in grade five. Slide 18, we have our groups broken down again by ethnicity, by gender, socioeconomic status, English language speaking, and special education. And these are the percentages of each group for each scoring level. Moving on to the SATs, this is, this is, these are the scores for the graduating class of 2020. So, these students had taken all their SATs before the pandemic hit. And I would also like to mention that we still remain one of the few school districts around that offers a free SAT to every senior, every year. We do that the second week of October. They come in school, they take it. Every student takes it, as you could see. The number of students who takes it, who take the free SAT is right around 1,000, so it's well over 90% participation rate. So, we have students, all types of students taking that test, and still, our participation is, has increased, and as has our performance. If you look at the reading/writing score from 2016 to 2020, our scores have gone up, in this case, 30 points. Math score took a little dip, but now it's coming back. So, our combined district's score since 2016 has gone up 31 points, and that's an average score. The state mean score is a little bit above us, but if you notice, the state numbers since 2018 have gone down. That's the second and last column. And then in the last column, the total group, that means nationwide, and so the nationwide averages has gone down pretty much every year since 2017. Ours are either remaining the same or going up. So, that, that difference is narrowing. We have SAT disaggregate groups, and again, we have our test takers are in different ethnicities, different genders, and the next slide is a continuation of this slide. The benchmarks, the benchmark for the SAT is a number on the math score or the language arts score, where statistically, if you meet the benchmark, 70, you have a 75% chance of earning a C in first semester. So, the benchmarks, and as a matter of fact, the whole, the entire SAT is not a predictor of how well you will do beyond freshman year in college. It only, it's used as an entrance test, but it's not a very good predictor. And this, this is a continuation of the subgroups of SAT for English language and socioeconomic status. A waiver is a fee waiver. English language learners, the final test we can analyze is called WEATA access. So, every student who registers in our district is given a English language screening, and those students are placed, not only by grade level, but they're, if they, we find out that they're identified as English language learners, they will be, we provide them with additional English language services. Could be bilingual program, or it could be a ESL program. But in this case, this gives us all of our data. Now, this test is graded on a scale of one to six, and it's kind of a unique test because for the SLA, all the students basically start at the same spot in third grade. On this test, depending on when the students transfer in, it could be a middle schooler, it could be a high schooler, it could be an elementary schooler, and they're placed chronologically, which means they're placed in an age-appropriate grade, but they might not be literate in not only English, but also their native language. So, these students, of course, we welcome them, but many of them have challenges. I mean, you can imagine yourself moving to a country where you don't know the language. So, WEATA is something that helps us track their English language proficiency. If you're wondering, a 4.5 on this, if they score a 4.5 on the test in a scale of one through six, 4.5, they will be able to test out. They're considered English language proficient. On slide 25, if you notice, on the bottom left, you see our numbers went from 675 to over 800 in 2018. So, those numbers are going up considerably. And last year, the WEATA takes several days, so we had 762 ELLs on record. We started 543 tests. We were only able to complete 365 tests, and that, that's across K to 12. And the proficiency score, we, 129 of those 365 basically passed out of the program, which is about 35%. Slide 27 is a comparison of how, how our LEP students do on the NJSLA. And of course, this data is, is older, but if you look at the middle bar graph, and Woodbridge Township, it was only one point behind the Middlesex County average, but ahead of the state average in language arts. And on slide 28, again, looking at the same middle bar graph, here in math, we were averaged ahead of Middlesex County and the state. Now, all these numbers and all these tests, the most important thing they do is provide us with data, and data on students, data on groups of students, data on grade levels, data on how we are progressing towards mastering the standards. When we see that students are not progressing as we would like to see them, we have a myriad of intervention strategies, both on elementary and secondary level. And now, we have adopted these strategies to be able to, so that we can provide them during remote instruction. And these are just a couple of them. And as I said, they're, they're all, we were able to access all of them during remote Slide 31, probably the most popular intervention strategy is iExcel. And here, you could see that we've had hundreds of thousands of skills that we're practicing, tens of thousands of hours of work registered by our students, and millions of questions answered. And again, this provides us with, with just more data on how to help students who are struggling. This summer, we, for the first time, we did, we rolled out a summer bridge program that was called Imagine Learning, and this will be, this presentation will be online tomorrow. If you'd like to see some of the ins and outs of Imagine Learning, you could click on these links. We also have many Title I programs. Nine of our schools are, nine of our 17 elementary schools are currently Title I, and Title I is an economic designation, but the Title I programs and activities are available to any students who need any help. And again, we have, our schools did a great job adopting all of these programs, or as many as possible, to online learning. Before-school tutoring, after-school tutoring, during lunch, weekends, summers, as much as we can, we, we have to employ, employ all of these programs. The challenge that we're facing this year, obviously, is anything that we offer is going to be offered virtually until we get back into schools. So, we realize, and, and what's not included in any of this is the social-emotional capacity and this emotional, social-emotional well-being of our students. We understand that we have to balance screen time with instruction, and that's very important. Just today, for example, there was a, a large push from many people to allow the students time to get out and play in the snow. And, and we, we understand that, but our, our business is, is education, and our business is instruction. So, we have to strike a balance between what, what the students need to do socially and emotionally, and what we need to do as a district as far as instructing them. And that's, that's very, very important in all these decisions. So, we are going to continue with all these programs. We know that student achievement will continue to improve in our district, and we look forward to showing the public how much we've improved. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Harris, seconded by Mr. Velez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board at this time? Okay, seeing none, roll call, Ms. Rooney.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebawser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes. Okay, Finance and Insurance, Mr. Treebawser?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Business Administrator, Board Secretary, prevents, presents the following 10 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Treebawser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Okay, seeing none, roll call, Ms. Rooney.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebawser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes. Security and school safety, Mr. Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Security and School Safety Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools present the following two items, and I recommend, move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Velez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Treebawser. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Okay, seeing none, roll call, Ms. Rooney.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebawser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes. Okay, Athletics and Extracurricular Agenda, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Harris. Are there any comments or questions from the Board?
Mr. Delapetro? Yes, to the Chair. Dr. Zaga, I wanted to bring this one thought to your attention, okay, from a parent of a student athlete. Perhaps our athletic directors and athletic trainers are already thinking about it, there's a chance we could come back for winter sports, or certainly, spring sports is the hope. Is there any guidance out there yet, or, or at least the thinking of screening our student athletes who had COVID and potential long-term effects in relation to, yeah, I'm sure you heard about the University of Florida basketball student who just dropped on the basketball court. Perhaps there's a way to do some kind of heart screening, or something of that nature, before our student athletes hit the, hit the court or hit the ice, or, or what have you, when, when the time is appropriate?
As of, to the Chair, as of right now, there's no, there is no guidance from either DOE or NJSIA that I know of. Our students are still required to get, to take physicals.
Okay.
Before they come, and I believe there's a cardiopulmonary screening.
Sure, yeah.
But as of, as of right now, nothing specific to any long-term effects of COVID.
Okay, okay. But perhaps when the time comes, if we could-- But perhaps when the time comes, if we could put our heads together, you know, make sure our students are protected from, you never know, you know?
Mr. Harris, I, I do meet with the NJSLA, and I'll be sure to bring it up.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any comments or questions for the board? Okay, seeing none, roll call Ms. Rooney.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebawser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro.
Yes.
Buildings and grounds, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Buildings and Grounds Committee, on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator, present the following three items. I move the adoption of the foregoing.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Harris, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Velez. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Molnar.
On item number three, the purchase of the, the new lockers, is that coming out of money that was in the bond referendum, or is that just out of the capital reserve?
Through the chair, Mr. Molnar, capital reserve.
Okay, so that's not the...
The last one.
So it's not, nothing to do with the bond referendum?
No referendum of money. Okay, I have a, I have a motion and a second. Are there any further comments or questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, roll call Ms. Rooney.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebawser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro.
Yes.
Transportation, Mr. Velez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Transportation Committee, on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary, present the following four items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor by Mr. Velez, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Molnar. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, roll call Ms. Rooney.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebawser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro.
Yes.
Okay, personnel agenda, Mr. Molnar.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee, on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, presents the following. Tonight, I will be moving 29 items.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Treebawser. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Okay, seeing none, roll call Ms. Rooney.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Mr. Molnar.
On item number nine, I will be abstaining in the name of Charlie Brooks, yes on all other items.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebawser.
Yes.
Mr. Velez.
Yes.
Mr. DeLaPietro.
Yes.
Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations?
I do at this time, Mr. President. There's a resolution that I'd like to read, if possible, and then we have our motion, a second, and a vote.
Sure.
Be hereby resolved that the Board of Education does hereby appoint Jonathan Treebawser, Mark Sinelli, and any other individual deemed necessary and appropriate by Board Counsel and Insurance Defense Counsel to appear to testify as the designated 4:14-2C representatives of the Board in response to the notice to take oral deposition served by counsel for plaintiff in the matter of Tyler Brown et al. versus Alexis Novia et al., docket number MID, M-I-D, dash L, dash 8651, dash 19. Just anyone, anyone can make a motion.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Molnar, seconded by Mr. Sedana.
So you can just, all those in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the board? Okay, seeing none. Any new business, business that should be brought to the attention of the board?
Mr. DeLaPietro.
Mr. Treebawser.
If I may, only because tonight is your last meeting. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to say what an outstanding job you've done helping us to navigate these very difficult and challenging times. And people in the public may not realize that being the Board President is just a whole lot more work. It's not necessarily any position of grandeur or anything else. And I just wanted to thank you for all your hard work, long hours, and diligence in dealing with a very, very challenging time in our country's history and our district's history. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treebawser. Any other new business that should be brought to the attention of the board? Mr. Harris?
Yeah. Sure. What I echo, thank you, John, for thinking of that. And hard to believe, it's already the end of the year. Frank, it's been one all the year. But congratulations on a, on a job well done. As someone who's sat in your chair previously, I think you did a...
Thank you.
...defender's job.
Thank you.
I, I did want to just add one, one thing, a shout-out, as I typically do, to Mr. Mark Sinelli of the, of our Food Services Department, along with the Transportation Department. Throughout this entire year-to-date, since, since school returned in September, our transportation bus drivers, our food service employees have, haven't missed any time at all. They've, they've been going into work, delivering lunches, breakfast, and want to thank Mr. Sinelli and his entire staff, all 100-plus of them, for innovatively thinking and frankly, taking advantage of the federal program that provides free breakfast and lunch to all students regardless of eligibility. So I just want to recognize his team for all their hard work and dedication, putting their, frankly, their, their safety, if you will, I gotta, gotta say that carefully, but, but putting their, you know, putting their lives and their families at, at risk and coming to work every day and, and serving our, our students, whether transporting them or providing them breakfast and lunch. Just a huge shout-out. They've, they've done a tremendous job, and thank you so much. And everybody have a happy and safe holiday season.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Molnar?
President, I also would like to congratulate you and thank you for this year, your role as Board President. As Mr. Treebawser said, it's, it's not easy. This year, there were a lot of challenges, you know, going from, you know, remote learning to Zoom meetings, to, you know, graduation ceremonies in person, drive-by. You know, you were always there, you know, lobbying on behalf of the students. So I just want to thank you on the, you know, on behalf of me and the rest of the board members, I'm sure, will echo on a fabulous job this year. And as we meet on this last night of Hanukkah, to all the parents, our students, our staff, everybody in Woodbridge, we hope you had a very happy Hanukkah. As we approach Christmas, wish, like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and a very Happy New Year. Nothing against you, Mr. DeLaPietro, but I'm ready to turn the page on 20 and get to 21.
You and me both. Okay, any other new business? Okay, just, just real quick, this year has been a topsy-turvy year. It's definitely different. I can't thank the administration or our employees for the outstanding job that was done this year. You know, when the, when the pandemic hit, it, it threw us for a loop, you know? We, but we pulled together and we made it happen. So I just want to thank everyone for your help. It's been greatly appreciated. Sorry to get emotional, but you guys did a great job. Dr. Zega, you did a great job also.
Thank you. Couldn't do it, John.
So I'm looking forward, you know, for the next, we just got in again, so for the next three years, you know, fixing stuff, that's, that's what, that's what we do. So again, I'd like to thank everyone. Any other new business? Seeing none. Okay, if you wish to say something, please come to the microphone. Please provide your name, the section of township that you reside in, for the record. Please limit your comments to no more than five minutes in accordance with Regulation 1100D. No response will be given until you have filed, until you have fully completed all of your comments, as to not interrupt your five-minute opportunity to speak. For those residents who are unable to attend tonight's meeting, you can email your comments to the superintendent at woodbridge.k12 nj.us.
Hi, my name is Charity Seaworn. I have a couple of questions. So as for curriculum, I know that we talked a little bit about how with like COVID and budgeting, there wasn't enough like money to allocate to different curriculum efforts. However, I'm wondering with this like new school year coming up later, what efforts are being done for inclusivity? And I'm talking about gender, I'm talking about race, sexuality, disability, socioeconomic status, et cetera, et cetera. The next thing I also wanted to ask about was if there's anything about zero tolerance policies when it comes to discipline within the school district, in particular, willful defiance, and seeing if that is an issue, like is that, is that within our policy and procedures? And is there any way of removing that as that disproportionately affects black students? But in particular, for willful defiance, how it affects black girls? And if you want to know more information, read the book Push Out by Monique Morris. The next thing that I also wanted to talk about was, is the summer bridge program free for all students? Or is it something that students have to pay for? Is it based upon certain things? That was something that I was interested in, based upon the packet. And the other thing was, WIL had a town hall two weeks ago, and one of the, one of our members of, of the community mentioned how students were receiving surveys. I didn't really know about this until I asked my little sister about it. And it was basically like a wellness survey, they get it like every Wednesday, I believe. And one thing that was mentioned was that there's surveys being handed out, but nothing is being done to help these students. So I'm wondering, like, what is the purpose of these surveys and what is being done to help these students? If they are like feeling any type of way about online learning? Then the last question I have is, under security and school safety, you mentioned that officers were going to be paid $46 per hour, eight hours per day. And my question is, what is the function and role of these police officers? I remember during the summer, we talked about how we didn't really want them inside the schools. So I'm wondering, what are they going to be doing, especially if students are going to be returning back to school? So yeah, those are my questions. I have a lot, I'm sorry, but yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Zega, we'll answer some of your questions.
Okay. Hi, Charity. Our, as far as last year, our budget was slashed pretty well, but we will, we're actually starting to form next year's budget now. And we'll always have enough money in there for, for our curriculum and upgrades. But processes, we make our budget, and then we, a week before we finalize our budget, we get our state aid numbers. So, and, and at, last year, for instance, we got our aid numbers, which were pretty favorable. And then a while, a while after that, that those numbers were, were reduced significantly. So it's, it's kind of, you know, we, we put everything in there, and then we see how much money we get, and then we, we hope we have to make cuts, but we prioritize, and we always have an idea of, of what we, needs to be in, what has to be in, and what, and then kind of secondary and tertiary, what, what can go if we have to make cuts. So that's the process. There's always, we spend, if you look at our budget presentations, we spend millions on curriculum. And with all of our things in place, our equity teams and our diversity councils and our district-wide equity efforts, all that will be part of the budgeting process for next year. And it will probably have some highlights when we make our budget presentation on what we are budgeting for. That was question one. Question two, zero tolerance. Discipline is, is almost an art form, and it really depends on a lot of factors. We have policies that try and govern these infractions or these situations, but there's always no, no two situations are the same. So we really, that's why we have administrators, because it's their job to discern, you know, what, what an appropriate punishment would be, or an appropriate consequence. We have done some things, we've started to do some things, particularly at Colony High School, where we're looking at different types of consequences for students that would be more learning opportunities, and for students to demonstrate to their peers what exactly, how exactly they intend to change their behaviors. And that actually came out of all of our equity work. And we, we have to thank Mrs. Anderson for that. She's, she's really been spearheading this effort, and it's been filtering down to all of our schools. It's a top priority for every single school. We have two different committees in each school that just look at all these, these situations. And if you could email me the name of the book?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to get a copy of it. The Summer Bridge is free for all. We purchased it for everyone, even though we, we didn't have the participation that we liked, that we would have hoped. But in the beginning, we made a commitment and said, you know, we're, we're going to get it for everyone. And even if they don't log on or don't complete it, you know, we, we want everyone to have an account. So everyone got an account, even though the participation rate was probably less than 50%. The wellness surveys, like I mentioned, student social emotional health at this point is, is really another top priority for us. And we want to make sure that not only are we assessing these students, but we are following through. I had a great meeting with the Student Advisory Group, and one of the, that you used to be part of. One of the things that they talked about was, you know, making sure that the principals followed up. The next day, coincidentally, we had principal meetings, and I made sure that the principals understood that now, more than ever, if students are reaching out and students have the courage to come forward and say, hey, I need some money to talk to, that we are responsive to those, to those requests. And finally, the police officers.